Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, August 14th, 2023, and this is a legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. A couple of announcements in case of emergency. We ask that everyone remain calm. We go out this door here, take a right and go down the stairs. If that way is blocked, you would go out, take a left around the corner and down the stairs. In the event of emergency, please do not use the elevator. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, we have forms at the entrance table that you can fill out and leave with our city clerk. And just to note that tonight, there are two public hearings. So those who wish to present or speak during a public hearing, the comments are limited to that topic only, and you will be sworn in by our city clerk. Those two instances are not public comments. Public comments are at the end of the meeting. At this time, would like to, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Reverend Dr. David McLendon here from St. James AME? I do not see him. Okay. We will do at this time, we will take a few moments and have a moment of silence. Next, we have a proclamation, and I will turn this over to Mayor Jack Heath.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a proclamation this evening. Whereas Dr. Jacon Bouvier Copeland of Pan African Women's Philanthropy Network and the Wise Fund established the month of August as Black Philanthropy Month in 2011, with recognition by the United Nations as part of its 2011 Declaration of International Year for People of African Descent, and then in 2015 to '24 Declaration of the International Decade for People of African Descent. And whereas Black Philanthropy Month is an annual global celebration of African descent giving in all its forms, the month-long observance invites all peoples of African ancestry and allied brothers and sisters to take August and beyond to promote the power of giving to transform lives. And whereas Black communities have vested reasons to celebrate, renew, rich, share traditions of giving, self-help, innovation throughout the U.S. and the world, and whereas an extraordinary legacy of philanthropy, an ongoing achievement in philanthropy merit a concerted effort to lift up important stories, spotlight good work, educate the generations, and inspire giving. And whereas understanding and generosity are instrumental to improving social, educational, economic, and health outcomes in Black communities, and whereas philanthropy at its enthemological root means love of humankind, and everyone desires love and deserves to flourish with love. Now therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim August 2023 as Black Philanthropy Month in our city, and invite all public officials, the young and forever young-hearted, and all the people of Salisbury, Maryland, to observe this month and to recognize the vital role generosity plays in ensuring a healthy, safe, and prosperous community in which to live, work, and flourish. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next, we have a presentation from our local...
Excuse me.
Yes.
What are the ladies here that are representing that?
Yes.
Black Philanthropy Month?
Oh, okay.
I did not know that they were going to be here.
Yes.
Could you come up, please?
Sonia Whithead.
Sonia Whithead.
Morris and Lori Carter.
I know a couple.
Yeah. They're here.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were... I know. How are you? All right. Let me come over. Let's do a present.
We have to do the picture.
Yeah, we'll do it this way. Do a picture. Sharon.
Slow. God, no, look slow.
Don't go anywhere yet, y'all, because I'm moving real slow today.
He said don't move.
Don't go nowhere. I'm moving real, real slow.
April 6th, man, performance.
He says I'm what? What did you say, Jack? No, I'm not feeling well today.
You can't, you can't see it, can you?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Stop. Got you. Stop, right? Thank you.
You can, you can. Thank you. Thank you.
You didn't want to say something?
Yep. You're fine.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for all you do in the community.
Yes.
What a trio we have here tonight.
That's right.
We do.
Giving, yeah, we have working women here.
Did you guys want to say something? Did you want to say something?
Giving is what it's all about.
Lori, did you want to say something?
Yeah, did y'all want to say anything?
Put it on the spot.
Lori, Sharon.
Sharon, you want to do something?
Thank you. We had a great celebration.
Friday?
Friday.
No, Saturday. I didn't get to come.
And it went very, very well. Actually, one of the recipients was Faith Over Fear Economic Impact.
Yes.
It was a black business.
Yes, she did. It was beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we will have a presentation from local health improvement coalition, which is going to be the Wycomico County Health Department, Health Planner Lisa Renegar, and Health Officer Matthew McConaughey.
Right in the front. Mm-hmm. He's not, but I think we have somebody from the side of the house here.
He had an unexpected issue come up, so he sends his regrets. He's not able to be here, but we're excited to be here. My name is Lisa Renegar. I am the health planner at Wycomico County Health Department.
And I'm Kat Rogers, Director of Community Health Initiatives at Title Health and Co-Chair of our Local Health Improvement Coalition.
Very good. So we put together just a couple of slides, and then we want to show you a resource. So the reason why we're here tonight, and thank you, Michelle, for the invitation, is that we have a new website with lots of health data that we want to share with you. Let me see here. So we wanted to start by giving you some background on our partnership. And so for many years, Title Health, Somerset County Health Department, and Wycomico County Health Department have partnered to conduct a comprehensive community health needs assessment. And this covers Somerset, Wycomico, Worcester Counties, as well as Sussex County, Delaware. And we do this assessment every three years. And the point of the assessment is so that we can identify health priorities to work on. And this is completed by, we look at a bunch of population health data, as well as data through focus groups, community surveys, and key informant interviews. Once the community health needs assessment is completed, the next step is to develop and implement a community health improvement plan to address the areas that we identify as priorities. And we do all of this work through our local health improvement coalitions. And if you did not know, every county in Maryland has an ELHIC. That's short for Local Health Improvement Coalition. And ELHICs are charged with improving the health of the community. These are our current health priorities. We have three of them. So the first one is access and health equity. The second one is behavioral health. The third one is chronic disease and wellness. And for access and health equity, some of our goals include increasing equitable access to health care, providing education, and promoting awareness of health equity, including making policy recommendations. For behavioral health, our goals include improving behavioral health through prevention, treatment, and recovery, with a focus on reducing suicide deaths and opioid misuse and overdoses. The final area is the chronic disease and wellness, and our goals include reducing prevalence and mortality rates of chronic disease in the partnership area. We have a focus to reduce the prevalence of diabetes and to increase health care screenings. We also have a goal to promote and support healthy lifestyles and wellness, specifically to decrease the number of individuals that are overweight in our jurisdiction, and also to increase physical activities. So the reason we're here today is we wanted to share this website with you. And just a little background, the website was launched in April, and it includes information on our latest needs assessment, as well as our community health improvement plan. And it provides interactive tools and graphs for key health data. And Kat's actually going to pull up the website to give a demonstration. And if there's any question, that's her contact information. So we called this HealthyDelMarva.org, and we presented it to our local health improvement coalition as a resource for community health data. But what I found in sharing this with different groups, this can be a tool for nonprofits, community organizations, government entities who want to apply for grant funding and need to demonstrate data and need in their population. This is also, we have a vision of this being a really truly collaborative resource for our entire community to feature different healthy initiatives, and I'll give you an example of that. So the website's really easy to remember. It's HealthyDelMarva.org. And then in the About Us, let's see, this is... Okay, here we go. All right. There we go. We have the opportunity to put a calendar of healthy lifestyle events and programming. That's in the works right now. Right now, we're featuring what you may or may not have heard of, is the Rural Equity and Access to Community Health Program, which is meant to reduce disparities with hypertension and diabetes, and features a number of different partnering organizations. So that's what we have on the About Us. And then on the main page, you start with access to data, and it's very user-friendly. But as she mentioned, the community health needs assessment, that document is included here as a PDF. And we've made our community health improvement plan more interactive and built a special webpage just to present that with each of the goals and objectives. And now Lisa and I are working on showing the indicators of where we are in achieving those goals and objectives for our community health improvement plan. So this is just to show you an example of how we've built out that page. I said that different organizations could use this. Let me show you, there's all these different dashboards, custom dashboards and reports anybody could build. Just to give you an example of some of the data that's available that I find interesting, and all throughout it, it tells you what the sources of the data is. We have a contract at Title Health with Conduent Healthy Communities, and they have data feeds from dozens and dozens of different sources. So they also have special indices. So one is, for example, Food Insecurity Index. Let's say that your organization wanted to do something to address food insecurity. Then you might want to say what the need is in your area. So this map is color-coded in the dark green areas or this different code that have the highest rate of food insecurity in our service area. So this is just to show you an example of some of the things that are available to the public now on this website. So compare how Wycomico County is, it's on Somerset right now, to different national indicators available through the CDC's Healthy People 2030. So if there was a particular health issue that your organization was working with, you could see where we were in comparison, because a lot of projects, you want to do things where your community is at a lower target rate. Then, if you scroll down a little bit farther, we have added a new resource called Find Help. So this is an embedded platform that could be added to any organization's websites now, too. It's Healthy Del Marva Find Help, and it's to help people find free and reduced-cost services like medical, food, housing, and... So I'll just take you straight to there. We started to use this at the hospital. So our patient care managers, before they discharge somebody, they're screening for social determinants of health, like transportation and food and housing needs. And then they're using this platform to identify resources that are available, and then also to make referrals. So some organizations are now accepting referrals through this platform, including MAC Incorporated. So let's say that I have a patient or somebody, or this is also available for people to search anonymously. So you can use it as an organization connecting people to resources, or somebody can go to the site and search for something anonymously. So if I just clicked on 2181, and clicked on food pantries, then it provides a listing of those resources available. And... So those are the main things. I just wanted to kind of introduce, orient everybody to this new resource so that you can take that back to your constituents. And then there's also a resource library, promising practices. So usually you want to have, if you're proposing an intervention or a program, you can go here to find examples of promising programs in other areas that might be similar to ours. You might even find a listing of funding opportunities. These are, for the most part, national resources to try to find grants to support your organization or your cause.
Thank you.
This is very impressive.
It is.
Very nice.
Questions? I just want to dive in now.
Yeah, this is really good.
It's a good resource for your communities.
Are there, just, I know, obviously, the health department, do you have any other agencies using this? Health Department, the Board of Ed?
So, yeah. So as I said, at Title Health, we're using it. We're using the Find Help piece of it, but we're just starting to get the word out about HealthyDelMarva.org and all the data that anybody could use. So we came here so that we can spread the word to the general public, to all the local nonprofits, community-based organizations who I know rely heavily on grant funding. So those are the, most of the people who are using this at this time.
And I like how you had the food pantries listed in order and locations, and it's a good thing for people to use.
Housing, goods, transportation, everything.
This will be a great resource, too, I think, for us as a city, for us to use for our folks that we're trying to find housing for.
Yes.
And, you know...
You're right.
Grants, grants that we're looking for, that sort of thing, you know. We're, I know we pride ourselves on being able to get the grants, but, you know, having another source to find these sort of things all in one place is really, really helpful. And that's why I was really excited to try and get you guys here, because this is, this is going to help the community so much.
Yeah, I'm going through it right now. It's very comprehensive, so thank you all for showing us this.
And the Find Help is a really special thing that we were able to purchase a subscription to this as, as the health system because of receiving the CHRC grant for REACH to address diabetes and hypertension. This was something we wrote into that and have written into other grants. And so we're, we're, we have a coalition separate from the local health improvement coalition working on that specific project. It involves all three health departments, AGH, MAC, Chesapeake Healthcare, Building Mosaic Solutions, Rebirth Incorporated, and the Wycomico Library. So those are sort of our early adopters of the Find Help for receiving referrals, for using it to make referrals for those health-related social needs. So we want more people to know about it. We are going to have a Reach for Health campaign coming out soon to promote this website, the calendar of healthy lifestyle programming that, that I mentioned, and access to Find Help.
Well, you all have done a wonderful job.
Yeah. This is amazing. Really amazing.
Thank you both.
Put together really well. Thank you all.
Yeah, it is. I'm gonna go click it.
All right.
Give some healthy tips. Thank you.
So what we'll do now, we're gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and call for a motion to adopt a legislative agenda.
So move. Second.
And Ms. Jackson. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. On the consent agenda tonight, there are seven committee appointments. The first four are appointments to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for the terms ending August 2025. So the first one is Resolution Number 3268, appointing Daniel Green. Then we have Resolution Number 3269, appointing Michaela Summers. Resolution Number 3270, appointing Jonathan Moore. And Resolution Number 3271, appointing Maria Kornman. We have Resolution 3272, appointing Chalara Sesums to the Historic District Committee for term ending August 2026. And the final two are appointments to the Truth Committee, both for term ending August 2027. The first being Resolution Number 3273, appointing Amber Green, and Resolution Number 3274, appointing Joanne Morissette. And that's it.
Questions or comments about the consent agenda?
None.
Hearing none, a call for the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Do I have Daniel Green, Michaela Summers, Jonathan Moore, Maria Kornman, Chalara Sesums, Amber Green, and I think Joanne Morissette is on Zoom?
Yes.
Are any of those people present in the room? No? Well, thank you all, if you're watching on TV or for your service. One of the most important things for keeping things moving in our city is volunteers to our committee. A lot of the things that we see that come to us do go through committees first, and we appreciate those individuals volunteering their time. So thank you.
I think Joanne has her hand up.
She's here.
She's here.
I thought she raised her hand to say something.
Okay, next.
Hello, it's Joanne Morissette. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. I wasn't sure there. This is new to me. So thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity and for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Miller.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Only one item this evening. It's the award of bid for Invitation to Bid Number 24-105. It's a subcompact sweeper. This was for the Department of Field Operations. It's a 2021 subcompact or mini-sweeper. We'd like to use a cooperative contract for this, Sourcewell Contract Number 093021-EXP. The vendor being Infrastructure Solutions Group out of Mechanicsville, Virginia. The total cost for this mini-sweeper is $146,720. The Salisbury Charter 16-3, item number nine, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, is what allows us to use a competitive contract for this type of item. A cooperative contract, sorry.
Questions or comments about this item?
Yeah, we've been dreaming of this sweeper.
This one's a little bit more maneuverable in areas that the bigger one can't get.
It is.
So that's good.
Yeah, this is, this is, actually came about because of some comments that we've had about the curbing where there's problems, and also the bike lanes. So this makes it a lot safer and in response to the wishes of the citizens.
All right. Hearing no other questions or comments, a call for the question. All those in favor of approving the award or bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Now we are at public hearing number one. It's going to be presented by Assistant City Administrator Tom Stevenson.
Good evening, everyone. It's, it's been some time since I've been to the podium. Ms. Miller reminded me of that earlier. I did the math. It's been some seven years. So I would suggest that I probably will not be as polished as perhaps the city clerk or our procurement director. So the over/under on the blunders is going to be 20. Please don't count, because I don't want to know. So thank you for your indulgence. Resolution 3275 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the submission of an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce for the redesignation of a regional institution strategic enterprise zone. Whereas the Maryland General Assembly has established a regional institution strategic enterprise or RISE Zone program to, one, access institutional assets that have a strong and demonstrated history of commitment to the economic development and revitalization in the communities in which they are located, and, two, provide certain benefits to eligible projects developed in those areas. And whereas, under the RISE Zone program, a qualified institution, political subdivision, county, and/or municipality may establish its own program to provide rental assistance to a business that moves into or locates in a RISE Zone on or after the date of the RISE Zone designation. It has a nexus of qualified institution located in the RISE Zone, has been an active business no longer than seven years, then such business is eligible for rental assistance for up to three years. And whereas additionally, under the RISE Zone program, a qualified investor may be eligible for enhanced income tax credit equal to 50% of the investment made to a qualified Maryland biotechnology company under the Biotechnology Incentive Investment Tax Credit Program, or eligible for an enhanced income tax credit equal to 50% of the investment made to a qualified Maryland technology company under the Maryland Innovation Investment Incentive Tax Credit Program. That's a lot to say. And whereas Salisbury University is an institutional asset to our community, and as such, the City of Salisbury believes it is in the, it is the definition of a qualified institution under the RISE Zone program. And whereas the City of Salisbury in the past has joined with Salisbury University to submit an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to have Salisbury University recognized as a qualified institution and to set boundaries designating a RISE Zone, both of which requests have been approved. Whereas the RISE Zone has changed substantially since the first designation of its boundaries, and the changes to the RISE Zone program necessitate a corresponding change to the boundaries and location of the RISE Zone, so as to allow for realization of maximum benefits thereunder. And whereas the City of Salisbury wishes to again join with Salisbury University in the submission of an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce to redesignate the attached map in the RISE area, it's not shown tonight, but you have it in your packet, therefore now be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that, one, the City of Salisbury supports the designation of Salisbury University as a qualified institution under the state's institution strategic enterprise zone or RISE Zone program; two, approves the submission of the application to redesignate the attached map area as a RISE Zone, and authorizes and directs the appropriate city officials to, to join with Salisbury University in executing and submitting the application to the Maryland Department of Commerce; three, acknowledges and provokes... RISE Zone, and authorizes and directs the appropriate city officials to, to join with Salisbury University in executing and submitting the application to the Maryland Department of Commerce; three, acknowledges and prove and approves that upon redesignation of the RISE Zone, the City may establish a program to provide rental assistance to a business that moves into or locates into a RISE Zone on or after the date of the RISE Zone designation, again has a nexus with a qualified institution located in the RISE Zone, and has been in active business no longer than seven years, such business is eligible for rental assistance under the program. It also acknowledges, number four, that it approves on redesignation of the RISE Zone a qualified investor for the enhanced income tax credit equal to 50% I said this before, of the investment made to the qualified Maryland biotechnology, technology company under the Biotechnology Incentive Investment Tax Credit Program, or eligible or enhanced income tax credit equal to 50% of the investment made to the qualified Maryland technology company under the Maryland Innovation Investment Tax Credit Program. Wow, that's a lot. This resolution was introduced and duly passed at the meeting of, by, at a meeting of the Maryland City Council of the City of Salisbury on the 14th day of August 2023, and should become effective immediately. I think I'm at six. I don't know. Did anybody count?
It was, yeah, five or six.
Five or six. I can ta, I can take that, all things considered.
So I'll call for a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 3275, minus the five mistakes that Tom made.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
So at this time, if there's anyone who wishes to speak in the public hearing for e, for Resolution Number 3275, please stand and be sworn in by our city clerk, Kim Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Mr. Taylor.
I raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor? And please try to keep your comments around four minutes if you can.
Good evening. I'll skip my longevity here in Salisbury. It's probably longer than some of you all may have been alive, but that's beside the point. I want to address the RISE program renewal. Mr. Stevenson went through a lot of bureaucratic, bureaucratic mumbo jumbo. I'd like to cut to the chase. What's really going on here is the renewal of the existing RISE Zone. And I'm gonna hold up, this is from your briefing book. This yellow part down here that runs down along South Salisbury Boulevard from the Central Business District is what's in the RISE Zone now. Now, to reauthorize it as proposed, it would include this area up here in light red, you probably can't see, it says CBD, that stands for Central Business District, which is essentially where all of these new parking lot sale development programs are planned. That's really what this is doing. It's sending up another potential freebie for the developers and their customers, tenants in that CBD zone. That's what this is. So let's face it, it's another freebie, and that's really what's going on here. Now, I've heard nothing about what has happened so far in the, this part, the existing part. Has there been any development? Has anything happened? I've also heard nothing about what, if there is any development, particularly in the CBD, what it's gonna cost the city. You've heard, you've heard no estimates whatsoever. So essentially, you're being asked to fly blind into some clouds, not knowing where in the heck you're going or where you're gonna come out. So I would suggest to you that at least you postpone this until you get accurate information and understand exactly what this is, and not the bureaucratic mumbo jumbo that we heard a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item for a public hearing? All right. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Any comments from the council?
I just think, once again, it opens up the possibility of, when the businesses come, to give them incentives. And people who have businesses in this room know that they go to places that they get the biggest incentives. It gives people employment. It brings in more, more money, more revenue, more people. So it's a, it's a good idea.
I, um, I don't concur. I'm kind of, have mixed emotions about this. I really do. I really, really do have mixed emotions. I have mixed emotions about the parking lots as well. And I just feel like we already have some businesses down there, so what are we gonna do with the businesses that are already down there? Are we disenfranchising them, or what?
That this program, any business that has been here less than seven years can qualify for it?
Yeah.
It's expanding it from the existing zone. It has nothing to do with parking lots, as was suggested in one comment. And I am, I'm in favor of extending this and expanding it. Any other comments from the council?
I would say, I was just gonna say, you know, having spoken to many of the business owners downtown, many of them are small businesses. They are people who live in our community. They are our neighbors. They are people that we see every day. And they are people that will need help at, at one point or another. And anybody who's owned a small business knows that the first few years are the hardest. And many of the businesses that are in the downtown area right now are in those first seven years. So, you know, I think this is gonna be good for the, for the city overall. I think this is gonna be good for the small businesses downtown. And, you know, I, I don't, I do not see any nefarious things in it that other people have said. So, I'm all for it.
No need to read or read. I think Michelle nailed it. Yeah.
Hearing no further comments, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3275, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Myself.
And the chair votes aye, so the vote is four to one. Next up is public hearing number two. At this time, we will call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2814.
So moved.
Second.
And turn this over to Ms. Beauchesne to present ordinance number 2814.
Ordinance number 2814, this is before you for first reading. There have been no changes or amendments since that first reading. And this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Section 17.76.020A of the Salisbury City Code to add service rental and repair establishments to the category of uses permitted in the light industrial zoning district.
At this time, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the ordinance? If you wish to testify, you're still sworn in, so we'll, we'll consider that. Mr. Taylor?
So you're opening the public hea-
I'm opening the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't know whether I'm for or against this, but I'd like to give some general history regarding our zoning code. First of all, this particular district, Light Industrial District, the purpose of it, it's specified in 17.76.010, and I quote, "to foster the continuance of existing manufacturing and other light industrial uses and encourage the location of new industries within the city to improve the economic base of the community." Now, when this district was set up some years ago, and I would just point out that the, we're now, I think, about 40 years into our current code. There've been a lot of piecemeal amendments, such as this one is proposed, over the years. But we're way behind in what they call comprehensive rezoning. And that includes a comprehensive look at the entire zoning code to see what uses should be where and where the district should be. And in any event, that's just a general comment, along with the purpose. So what's happened over the years is these piecemeal amendments that I'm talking about, to give you some example in this particular district, a couple of years ago, it was amended to add hairdresser shops. Now, that includes barber shops. Now, how that has anything to do with industry and manufacturing in a district is beyond me. I've been involved in zoning for about 50 years, and I've never seen that one. A few years before that, it was amended to allow churches. It's been amended to allow schools of special instruction, indoor recreational facilities, planned business centers, animal hospitals, a whole bunch of things that have nothing to do with the basic purpose of this district. And what we have, and it's not just this district, over the years, is an amended, contorted zoning code that badly needs to be straightened out. Now, as far as this particular amendment goes, I would say this, you've already screwed it up, so why, why stop now? I mean, that's my initial view on it. And I would also point out restaurants can be permitted by special exception. Now, why, if you're gonna allow hairdressing shops as a permitted use and schools of special instruction, why you shouldn't just allow restaurants as a permitted use? Why make them get a special exception? As I say, you've already screwed up the district. But getting back to the specific language that is to be added, and I'll read it, the proposed language, "service rental or repair establishments limited to laundry or laundromat, automobile rental, car wash, appliance repair, equipment or instrument repair or rental, dry cleaning, pickup station, pet grooming shop, upholstery shop, tailor, and tattoo parlor." And again, these are a whole bunch of things that have nothing to do with the basic purpose of the industrial zoning district, light industrial, pardon me. But anyway, like I say, why, why not just throw in the towel? I mean, why not just allow anything? You can allow the small neighborhood shopping centers, up to 3,000 square feet. Why not? You've got a whole bunch of other things in here that typically are located in shopping centers. So go ahead and, and do that. But I would ask for one exclusion, and that is the tattoo parlor. We simply do not need more tattoo parlors in the Light Industrial District or frankly anywhere else in the city. So I would strike that out. Frankly, I would go back and redo the whole zoning code, rather than making more piecemeal amendments to screw it up further, but I suspect the die is cast. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other, anybody wish to offer any other testimony for the public hearing?
I guess I should.
You'll need to be sworn in from our clerk, but you can do it from the podium.
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, my lawyer isn't here today, so I'm just trying to do this, make my argument or whatever. I imagine that you have the packet that was given in several businesses, including women supporting women, support me in my efforts to tattoo in this light industrial code, and to offer specialized services for areal reconstruction and other scars and mending that I can do with my craft, as well as regular tattooing. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, now, any other comments or any other for the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Any comments from the council? I'll just note that this was before the Planning and Zoning Commission, McComber County Planning and Zoning Commission, and they gave a unanimous recommendation for this.
Correct.
The other piece of, the reason that they added, there were other things that they thought could fit into a light industrial district, which is why there's other, other business, types of businesses listed. So, not hearing any other comments from the council, call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2814, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Okay. Next up, we have, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2816 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2816. I'd like to proffer that there have been suggested amendments before the passage of second reading. Mr. Garrett, the IT Director, had conversations with the Department of Housing and Community Development, and through those conversations learned that the grant funds that I can read about could be used for all city residents and not necessarily limited to the residents at Ann Street Village. So the proposal is to revise the ordinance accordingly to make clear that it is a benefit to all city residents. So with that, I will read ordinance number 2816 as amended. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting funds from the Digital Inclusion Grant in the amount of $18,400 for city resident technology education project. Whereas the Department of Housing and Community Development funds a grant to help municipalities provide technology and computer literacy training to underserved communities. And whereas the City of Salisbury Information Services Department, seeing a need for training on computer and technology devices and internet literacy for all residents, apply for said digital inclusion grant, and DHCD has awarded grant funds to ISD in the amount of $18,400. Whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with DHCD attached here to as Exhibit 1, and to be clear, there needs to be no changes to the grant amendment in light of this request, defining how the $18,400 in grant monies must be expended. And where Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2816 reads, "Acting Mayor Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is attached to Exhibit 1 in your packet, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $18,400. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby is amended as filers A, increase DHCD revenue account number 10500-423601-XXX by $18,400, and B, increase training account number 10500-555504-XXXX by that same amount, which is $18,400."
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to amend ordinance number 2814 as read.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of amending ordinance number 2814 as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2814 as amended.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
281, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
2816, I'm still up in the public hearing.
Second. Michelle?
Oh, we already did that. I'm sorry. So at this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2816 for second reading as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye.
I thought I should've brought my umbrella from the car.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2817 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2817, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the Salisbury City Code to add Chapter 2.25 entitled Labor Code and furtherance of Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-4, which authorize collective bargaining for certain employees of the city. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments on this ordinance?
None. We've been discussing this for over a year. I know.
You guys have been doing this a lot longer.
It's done.
I think it was in September.
It's still stone.
Last year. It's been nearly a year. So we've been around and around, discussed, discussed.
I'm thrilled, that's all I'll say. Yeah.
All right. Well, with that being said, I'll
Everybody should be happy.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2817 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye.
We should have harmonized on that one.
There isn't. Don't ask me to. It's not gonna happen.
All right, that one's done. All good? Okay.
Yeah, I think it needs to be revised.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2815.
So moved.
Second.
It's like snipers.
Running on the high of that last one is what that was.
Yeah.
Ordinance number 2815, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to defund the computer aided dispatch project and to appropriate funds for the purchase of portable radios. This is before you for second reading. Again, no changes or amendment since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor approving ordinance number 2815, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. See, next is, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2818 for first reading.
Second.
Ordinance number 2818, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for the raw water line Naylor Mill project. Whereas an ordinance number 2777, the City of Salisbury appropriated 1.2 million for the raw water line project at Naylor Mill. And whereas the city relies upon the raw water line to convey groundwater from wells to the Paleo Water Treatment Plant. And whereas the city relies upon this groundwater to supply water to the city residents for consumption as well as for fire protection. And whereas the Paleo Water Treatment Plant provides roughly 65% of the city's water supply. And whereas the city has determined an additional appropriation of $150,000 is necessary to complete the raw water line. And whereas the appropriation is necessary to execute the appropriation of the 150,000 as provided, must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2818 reads, Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the raw water line Naylor Mill project in the amount of 150,000. Section 2, the City of Salisbury Water Sewer Capital Project Fund Budget being hereby is amended as follows: Increase revenue for project description Raw Water Line Naylor Mill, account description Pago, account number 97030-469313-50048 by 150,000. Increase expense for project description Raw Water Line Naylor Mill, account description Construction, account number 97030-513026-50048 by that same amount, 150,000. Section 3, the City of Salisbury's FY24 Water Sewer Fund Budget being hereby is amended as follows: Increase revenue, account description Transfer Water Sewer Capital Projects, account number 91002-599108 by 150,000. And increase revenue for account description Use of Surplus, account number 60100-469810 by that same amount, which again is $150,000.
Any questions or comments?
I know, it's being done.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2818 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. Next, entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2819 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got that one.
Ordinance number 2819, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Maryland Department of General Services in the amount of 250,000 for the design of the Zoo Andean Bear exhibit. Whereas the City of Salisbury applied for a capital grant funding opportunity with the Maryland Department of General Services in the amount of $250,000 to be allocated to planning, design, construction, repair, renovation, reconstruction, site improvement, and capital equipment, equipping, I'm sorry, of an improved Andean Bear exhibit at the Salisbury Zoological Park. Whereas the Maryland Department of General Services has awarded the city a capital grant in the amount of 250,000. Whereas per ordinance number 2760, general fund monies in the amount of 250,000 were intended to be used for obtaining an architectural design prior to receiving a fully executed grant agreement. Since then, an approved and fully executed agreement was obtained, and thus it eliminates the need to use general fund monies. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development will ensure that the contract and bids are submitted and approved by the Maryland Department of General Services for RFP 23-106 Andean Bear Exhibit Design Contract in accordance with the Maryland Department of General Services capital grants process requirements. And whereas the appropriation is necessary to execute, the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2819 reads, Mayor Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to establish a grant account for the Maryland Department of General Services on behalf of the city for the city's acceptance of capital grant monies in the amount of 250,000. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's FY24 General Fund Budget being hereby is amended as follows: Increase DGS revenue account 10500-426000-29051 by 250,000. An increased engineering architectural expense account 10500-51302029051 by that same amount, which is 250,000.
Do you have any questions or comments from the council?
I'm just thrilled about this grant money. I mean, it's a huge amount.
Yeah, that's a nice, sizable grant. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2819 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp. Next, we are going to go for some public comments. And just to remind everybody, four minutes for comments. At 30 seconds, you will hear me do a light tap. That means you have 30 seconds left. First up is going to be, let me get rid of the ad that's on my timer. Man. There we go. First up is going to be Jeff Dean.
Mayor and council, thank you. Jeff Dean, I'm a resident of Middle Boulevard. Andy Kitzrow, city administrator, came to our neighborhood to discuss recovery housing last Sunday. He asked for the neighborhood to basically choose a representative. They chose me. The last two meetings, I've spoken on behalf of myself. Tonight, I speak on my, my behalf and behalf of the other residents of Middle Boulevard, at least those who were present, to choose me. I sent each of you an email. If you haven't seen it, please be aware that it's in your inbox. It has a lot of detail about the nutshell I'm about to give you, which relates to the definition of accommodation under the ADA regulations, as Ms. Beauchamp read to us last meeting. I want to draw everyone's attention to this, that accommodation, under the ADA regulation, as I understand it, I confirmed this understanding, but I reserve the right to be corrected on this, is an ADA-specific question. It is a question about the disabilities of the people in that home, and the accommodation is to be made by the entity requesting the, the special treatment to the housing authority, and it must include some type of justification for why the four disabled people who were in that house need additional people living in that house to help them fully use that home. So under Homes for Hope's current scenario, by their own admission, they have between eight and 18 people living in their various homes in Salisbury with one part-time counselor. So under their current practices, they have one accommodated individual by this math. They have eight disabled individuals, or 18 disabled individuals by their characterization, and only one person who would qualify as that accommodated person under, as my understanding of the ADA regulation. So, I sent you all this email with greater detail because Mr. Kitzrow and Mr. Thomason described an expedited process for getting this underway, but then they immediately, either misunderstood or mischaracterized, what we had just heard Ms. Beauchamp say is an accommodation. So they were talking about an accommodation as in a permission to do something that the building code doesn't allow for any various reasons. The accommodation is a very specific thing that requires specialized knowledge. And my example in the email, Salisbury University has a disability resources center that considers every accommodation request for its individual specificity, because they're very difficult and very technical. So, Mr. Kitzrow has not demonstrated to me in these five meetings I've had with him now that he is either willing or able to understand that nuance there. He is still leaning on this, and I've emailed him directly. I was expecting him to be here tonight. The HCCD, and as characterized by Mr. Kitzrow, is still claiming currently that they are going to entertain an accommodation request to put two people per bedroom without any current apparent consideration of what the disability concern is for that accommodation. I want to, I want to foreground that because it's super important. Even more important because the Wycomico County Behavioral, Behavioral Health Department under Michelle Hardy appears, by her own words, not to consider the housing that is being used for the recovery houses that she is, her office, is enabled to permit. So that makes it important. Under the ADA guidelines for fraud, self-referral is Medicaid fraud. If Homes for Hope, the main office, is the one declaring someone disabled, and they are using that definition to then house those people and bill Medicaid, that is at least bordering on self-referral. I would like to know, Mr. Kitzrow said that HDC, HCCD mistakenly gave wrong advice for the accommodation request, and I would like to know, has that affected New Town House? Do they have an accommodation there? If they do, they knew it needed to happen, didn't ask for one on Middle Boulevard. If they don't, that house should not be operating. Which brings me to my last thought, President, I will be very quick. Mr. Kitzrow, in this meeting, at the city council meeting, at the end of council meeting, opined on the value of the neighbors, right? And said that these people were great, they were great neighbors. During public comment, when you, when you all don't comment to us, that is akin to a judge telling the jury just before they go deliberate, "The defendant is a neighbor of mine, and I think he's great." Mr. Kitzrow also disclosed in our meeting that he was the president of the advisory board for Homes for Hope's first home in Newtown. So if you didn't know that, we just learned that. And in our meeting, he, I'm going to say slipped, but here's a direct quote, "When we said that she had 18 people in the Newtown house, he was surprised at that, and he said, 'If she does have 18, it's going to be very hard for me to, quote, 'have her back.'" And then he corrected himself, and he said, "For any of us to have her back." Now, I would like to know why Mr. Kitzrow considered his job to have anyone's back as just a judge would have anyone's back, protect the process. He told us in that meeting that he was going to protect his house, when I brought to his attention that the house that had the lead level poisoning incident was on Middle Boulevard, which was in the HD, HCCD. Two people were fired, to my knowledge, for accepting bribery to make false inspection reports, resulting in a lead level poisoning of a child.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
He said he was going to protect his house. I said his job is not to protect his house, it is to protect the city from his house. Thank you.
Next is Caitlin Lacan.
Thank you. I'm Caitlin. I live on Middle Boulevard. I have three things to address. The first is, I'm super excited about the new layout for the bike lanes on Middle, I mean, excuse me, on Waverly. If I understand correctly, it's going to put the driving lanes in the middle of the street where they belong. I greatly appreciate this. Literally, myself and my children have been at risk for getting our heads taken off by trucks driving by when we walk from our driveway to our front door. So seriously, thank you. And with that, I also want to address publicly, because I've tried to call the city before directly, there's a broken curb in front of my house on Middle Boulevard, right on the corner. It's broken because it was hit by a driver driving so fast who was intoxicated or on drugs or both. But it's dangerous. I don't know if you guys have it on your radar, because I have never heard anything back, but please bring that up. It should be fixed. It also causes debris to not go through, and so then it's flooding, which also causes more risk. So I just wanted to bring that up in case it's not. There is a water bill fee, this is my next point, there's a water bill late fee, which I totally understand, but it's not written on the bill. I was called back and asked to pay an additional $50 because I paid it at 8:24 PM, and I was supposed to know to pay it by 8:00 PM, which is kind of an arbitrary number anyway, when you're like a working person. So if that's going to be a real thing, could you please put that publicly on the bill? Because $50 is like a whole month's worth of water. My final point, I'm a bakery owner. I have a bakery in Worcester County and Dorchester, so not Wycomico. There's a rigorous and quite impressive amount of hoops I go through before ever being allowed to allow public or employees into my buildings to do any services. This is meant to keep us all safe. The hoops include fire code inspection, health inspection, building inspection, historic committee approval, just to name a few. The limits, with good reasons, how many people can be inside my building at one time, and also, most importantly, and to my point, where I can do business. For example, I cannot open a pie bakery next door to me on my residentially zoned street on Middle Boulevard. I'm asking Salisbury City to make clear guidelines for recovery houses in the same way. From my understanding, the goal is to serve their clients to the best of their ability, ensuring safety, tranquility, a healthy environment, and access to resources they deem necessary. An LLC of any kind should not be able to open somewhere zoned residential as it disrupts the health and morale of the residential neighborhood. We know this, and it's why we don't allow bakeries to open up for commercial use on, let's say, Middle Boulevard. Salisbury City has the power to make the city better. Acting Mayor, I saw a sign for you running for mayor this fall. I am asking you directly to show that you care about the stability of your city's residential neighborhoods and to put children first by putting an end to allowing recovery houses to open up anywhere an owner pleases, especially without going through the same or similar hoops that any other business goes through before opening and allowing anyone inside. As a bakery owner, I have to even turn in proof of where my eggs come from, and that farmer has to turn in proof that she's doing what she needs to do. It's shameful, if safety for everyone involved is the goal, it's shameful that where my eggs come from are under more regulation than where clients for drug addict recovery houses going next door to me come from. Again, there's 16 children on our street, there's a daycare, we're .9 miles from an elementary school, we're .5 from SU, and we learned last week there's at least nine unrelated adult men living in one residential home that's turned into the recovery house in the City of Salisbury where the 4 to 2 law still exists. As I've said, I'm a resident there, my backyard shares a side with one of these houses. It's not inspected by anyone, which we learned last week as well, nor was any paperwork from the owner ever turned in, as we learned last week.
Thank you. You can finish your thought if you'd like, but...
I was going to say that no matter what your business, if a kitchen and if humans are involved, there has to be regulation, because it literally is important. It's like, you're putting everyone at risk by not being thorough with this, not just children, not just angry moms, but also the people in these houses themselves. Everyone involved is a vulnerable type of person in some way in this incident, and there has to be regulation put on by you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Carolyn Wogamuth.
My name is Carolyn Wogamuth. I'm here today as, my sole purpose as a resident and city taxpayer, to advocate that you rescind the Horizon program. This program gives 20 years of tax waivers to developers. They pay absolutely no property taxes for the first five years. Then it's gradually reduced each successive five-year period thereafter. On the average, the waiver is a whopping 70%. How, how does this affect me? Well, I got my property tax bill from the city in July with yet higher amounts due to the 5% property tax increase. And mind you, this bill arrived on the heels of yet another water and sewer tax, sewer rate bill, this one with a 12% hike. I'm not happy, and neither are any of my neighbors. Government COVID funds have ended. The former mayor used a lot of COVID funds like there was no tomorrow. He pushed the Horizon program and another giveaway program, the Here Is Home program, to subsidize developers. So while developers get a huge tax break, city homeowners like me get higher taxes and... and increased water and sewer fees. All the new and proposed development in Salisbury equals more people, which equals increased need for infrastructure and services, police, fire, roads, maintenance, et cetera. Where is the increased tax revenue to come from? You, the mayor and the city council, seem to think that homeowners, citizens like me, are your private piggy bank. Why do I say that? Because you attempted to impose an illegal $300 fire fee on us, which was proof that there was a deficit already in existence. You approved a 12% water and sewer fee increase, another proof that a deficit already exists. You voted for a 5% property tax increase this year. Thank goodness, I and other residents fought that battle and managed to reduce it from a proposed 10% increase. You raided the rainy day fund by $1 million this year to balance the budget. You can't keep doing this, you just can't. The city's bond rating will drop, there's a real risk of bankruptcy if this continues. And why are you, the mayor and the city council, doing this? So that developers can continue to enjoy freebies at taxpayer expense? Stop this madness now, rescind the Horizon program. I overheard the city administrator at a recent meeting comment that attendees at that meeting needed to take a basic Econ 101 class. That comment was improperly directed. It should be applied to the mayor and the city council. Do the math. More residents equal more services, equal more tax revenue, not less. Certainly not developer tax waivers and fee refunds. In case I haven't made myself perfectly clear, let me repeat. You should rescind the Horizon program immediately. And then look to rescind the Here Is Home program as well. Thank you.
Ms. Wagamuth. Next up is John Wagamuth.
Well, I'm a taxpayer too, and I live in the same household as the last speaker. I pay the same increases in property taxes that appear that there's not going to be any end to increases to fund city giveaways. The Horizon program has never been explained to what the benefit is. We hear that we need more housing, but we have housing all around us. We hear that it's to help the workforce. Our employment rate is flat, it's not increasing. The idea is, we'll build it and they will come. How are they going to come to the downtown area when the parking lots are destroyed and we don't have any place for the tenants to park? None of this has been explained to the general public in any manner or form to us. We're going to fund a garage for the developer at a cost of $10 million out of a bond that the city is funding? That's like we spending money, $10 million, and having to pay interest on it that benefits only the sole occupancy of that area, which will be these apartments if they're ever Why are we funding for parking for contractors to build things?
We're not.
If they come in and they have told us it's not financially feasible for them to build it unless they get these huge grants and giveaways from the city, then it's not a financially sound thing that we should fund. The unsoundness goes to the taxpayer. We're left with the burden of all the loans that have to fund these projects, not the developer. Developers may build their buildings, they'll sell them to capital venture people like they did with the Ross, and they'll walk away to another town and do the same thing. In the meantime, businesses will fail downtown because they can't have parking for their customers. The city tax base will disappear downtown, and the only people left to pay for it is retirees like myself, my wife, and a lot of other people that moved from the feared western shore over to Salisbury to pay for it. Well, before I start paying more taxes, I'll go back to Annapolis where the tax rate and the cost out of my pocket were lower than it is to live in Salisbury, Maryland. And it's a disgrace. I mean, the amount of services we get in this city is a fraction of what we did in Annapolis. And can you explain to me how we can be living at a less quality of life, only to fund developers to build projects that aren't needed or recklessly financially? It makes no sense. I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation, and on top of $10 million the city's going to spend on the garage, the Horizon program will cost us approximately $10 million in tax revenue from the developer. That's another $10 million that we're giving a contractor to build a monstrosity downtown and to destroy our downtown area. So I say the same thing. This is ridiculous, there's no return on investment, there's no return on quality of life to the people that live here or the businesses. You have not provided an explanation that passes any kind of smell test, so cease doing this. Kill this program, or you'll pay for it in the election. And you'll pay for it when people like I leave town and go back to where the tax base is reasonable and the government is run by competent people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Robert Taylor.
Thank you, I'm not going to reiterate what was said about the Horizon program, but I do fully agree with it. Full disclosure, I did have Economics 101 and actually a few other economics courses that were more advanced. My degree is in agricultural economics, somewhat the same. But in any event, I want to point out another way in which the average citizen, particularly those who work downtown, is getting shafted. For many years, I had a parking permit at the existing garage, up to about six or seven years ago. I think the last monthly rate I paid was $35. I just checked recently, that rate remained in effect until 2019. Since then, that's four years, it went up in this current budget to $70 a month. Now, that's doubling in four years. Now, people who work downtown, many of them park in the garage, and I think that's, what, $840 a year. Now, I also found out, and this frankly shocks me, that the sweetheart deal that this council gave to the developer of the Ross, students who rent at the Ross, tenants there, they can park in the garage, but it's only $35 for them, they get a special discount. So hard-working people who park downtown pay the full freight, and the Ross, essentially it's another subsidy for them because they have that cheaper parking rate. And I mean, this is what we've seen, unfortunately. It's not always been this bad. I'll talk to these people, as I say, I've lived here for 50 years. But beginning about 10 or 12 years ago, when John Pick resigned as the city administrator and left, I think he went to a similar position, I believe, in Iowa, things have really started to go downtown, downhill, pardon me. And it began roughly 2015, and we know who was elected then as mayor. And what we're seeing now is the fallout of it. And unfortunately, we have, I think, at least three, maybe four people on the council that just marked lockstep. We saw it tonight with the zoning matter that I spoke on. We saw it on the Rise program. The council has no idea what's being pulled off on them. They don't look at it, they don't ask questions, and they don't get information. Folks, there's an election in November, and you can do something about it. Thank you.
At this time, we will move to administration comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yep, as always, I'll give my plea for those people who can give blood, please do that. We are still in a desperate situation, and Angela Imperial will double my, give you more information. This Friday, it's Third Friday, and we hope you come out and enjoy it. And we have a, that same evening at 5:30, we have a ribbon cutting for the new headquarters, Salisbury headquarters and the old fire headquarters, and we invite you to come to that as well. The last item I have is, it's great to see in the last couple of months, the amount of people that are stepping up and volunteering for committees. And maybe some of the people that are critical of what we're doing could possibly influence some things that we do if they volunteered for some of these committees. So I hope that they do step up, because we could use them. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll go to council comments. I'll start with Mrs. Gregory.
Don't have much to update, just want to thank the local health improvement coalition for coming out. I'm really excited about the tools that they have that are available for the community and organizations out there. I think it's a great tool. I really hope folks check it out. So just want to put a plug out there for that again, and that's it.
Jackson?
Again, constituents, glad you come, glad you speak out. We need to know these things. Now, whether things are being done the way you think they should be done, don't know, but I can bet you that we're going to try our best to do whatever we have to do, which is the right thing for the constituents and the people that we represent. I'm going to say this, I haven't been feeling good today, but I'm going to say this. It feels like for the last four or five meetings, we've been getting slapped around, and I feel it. I do, I feel it. So we're going to have to do something, and it's not always what our constituents think, and it's not always what we think. We have to do what's right by you, and I'll say it a million times, we have to do what's right by the city. Whether you think it's fair or not, I'm not for sure, but we just have to do what's right. And you're seeing things entirely different, and I see things entirely different. There's some things I see that I don't like either, believe that, and I will speak up and I will hold, stand my ground for whatever. But I just hope that, you know, you will continue to come back and you will speak your plate and say whatever you have to say, and don't be discouraged because you think that we're not doing what you think we should do, or we're not doing enough, or whatever. Continue to come, continue to come, but I am tired of being slapped around, I'm telling you, and it's the truth. I have, we have been, I have been, I felt it. I don't know if nobody else has been feeling it, but I have, because when I sit up here, I feel the emotions from my constituents, from the people, I feel it. So I'm just tired of being, you know, I'm just tired of it, I really am, I'm tired. So I also want to say, Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activity, and I'm going to announce this today because it's very important, and the community members have, we have been raising money to take 40 youth, from the ages 12 to 17, September the 2nd, to Killen's Pond, to do a cookout and to do, take them to the water park. It is free to 40 youth, 12 to 17. I'm trying to do some things a little different, trying to keep our young people and let them know that somebody does care about them, because we do care, and there are people that do care. So I'm just trying to do this to see how this works, keep them going, and talk to our kids or whatever, you know, just have that conversation with our children to see where their minds are. But we're doing this, and we will continue to do things in our community to help, and I would like to see the city step up and do something for our children too, as far as crime is concerned. That's one of my main stances, the crime in the city with our young kids. I went to the Black Friday Expo downtown, it was excellent, didn't get to stay long because I was dragged down to the Riverwalk for the music, but it was lovely. I had a lovely time, so everything about this city is not bad, you know. I did enjoy it, and I don't usually come downtown on the Plaza, but I did, and I frequented my way to the Riverwalk, and then I went a couple of other places that I had, venues I had to be at. But I just want the people to know that we have your best interests at heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just showed up, I'll let it go.
Angela?
I don't have any, I mean, anything else to say. Of course, donate blood, the area is very depleted, and if you are fortunate enough to be healthy enough, please donate blood. Consider being an organ donor, you can also donate plasma, excuse me, plasma, and it's just vital. And you just never know, you or your family could be in a car accident, it could be a swimming accident, it could be something, you may need that blood. So please donate blood. That's all I have.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. I say this every week, we really appreciate when you guys take the time out of your evening to come down, have your voices be heard. Just wanted to second Jack's statement, you know, we have several commissions and committees that still have openings, strongly encourage you all to take the time and volunteer. You provide the voices, we, and provide us with the policy and action items to make significant changes here at the city. So I really hope that you go onto the city's website, there are a number of groups available, another number of ways for you to participate here in the community. I just want to say, I also was at the Black Business Expo this past week, it was so lovely to see the community out in full force, so exciting to see how many businesses and entrepreneurs we have here in the city. And something I said at that event was, this really does feel like the year of community revival for Salisbury, so I'm really excited for the number of events that we're going to have for the rest of the year. Just wanted to say it was lovely to see that going on, and looking forward to Third Friday. I really hope you all come out and check out the new headquarters location.
Couple of comments, congratulations to Chris Field on getting the world's largest rubber duck.
What is the function of a rubber duck?
I don't know. I at least want to see it float on the bay, but it is still hot outside, so we always like to remind Ms. Kay Gibson to make sure she hydrates, put some sunscreen on, and don't spend too much time out when it's really, really hot. Hopefully it stops raining. And I guess, Third Friday, I just encourage everybody to come out the Third Friday this week, and also wanted to say congratulations to the ugly pie who has moved, it is closer to my house, much more accessible for me.
It's much closer, it's around the corner from my house, you know what trouble I'm in?
And I do, I do want to call out my niece, Sida McKittrick, and her friends last week who did me dirty when they ate all of my Island Creamery ice cream that I had bought and I had planned to have the world, or the country's best ice cream, and they ate all of my ice cream. And that was my allotment for the month, I'm not allowed to buy anymore. Anyway, with that, everyone have a good evening and a safe week. We're adjourned. Thank you.